Counselor Baker.
Counselor.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
President.
Counselor Edwards.
President.
Counselor Asabi George.
President.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Garrison.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like all guests and colleagues and staff to please rise as our lovely clerk takes us through the invocation, and I ask everyone to remain standing as she leads us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon. The ringing of a bell calls us to worship. The pounding of a drum calls us to war. The popping of a cork calls us to celebration. What is the sound that calls us here with one another? Listen, listen carefully. It is here in the silence. Listen deeply. The beating of your own hearts calls us ourselves, calls us to be our true selves, calls us to be our best selves, and calls us to be what we might become. Listen, there is another sound. The breath of our neighbors call outside ourselves. Call us to be companions, call us to be allies, and calls us to be partners. Listen, we must heed the call of our own hearts where love and truth, caring and justice are born. Listen, we must heed the call of others to gather together for some great purpose where passion and fidelity, compassion and equity are nourished. The hammering silence calls us together that we may do the work we cannot do alone. Let us heed the calls that come in the silence that we may be well and do good in the world together. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we are going to move on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes of the last council meeting are so approved. Moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0579 notices CC for the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:00 a.m. on Sunday, March 24, 2019, until 8:30 p.m. on Wednesday, March 27, 2019.
Docket 0579 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0580, communication was received from Counselor Edwards on the report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development entitled "Building for All Bostonians: Examining Inclusionary Development and Linkage Programs in the City of Boston."
Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, first of all, thank my staff members, especially Joel Wu, who was vital in helping to develop this report. Also making sure that I wanted to give credit to the many people who we gave copies to and who gave feedback, including Tim Davis of the BPDA, James Jennings of the Tufts University, Kathy Brown and Kenan Ace of the Boston Tentacle Coalition, Margaret Turner of Greater Boston Legal Services, Jen Douglas and Michael Stone, and Joe Kriesberg of the MA Massachusetts Association of CDCs, as well as Dwayne Tyndall and Richard Dhuang of ACE from Alternatives for Community and Environment. This report was a lot of work, but we felt it was necessary to not only pick up on the conversations that we started, but also to summarize some of the recommendations we have going forward for the city. Specifically, we wanted to note and look at the two tools that the city uses to develop linkage and IDP and how they're used for promoting affordable housing. We had wonderful contributions in a recent hearing that we'll hear about, but more importantly, we wanted to make sure that these two issues, especially IDP, is not only affirmed but adopted as part of our zoning code. And currently, it is a policy that is renewed, but one of the recommendations from the report is that it become part of the code. We also wanted to make sure this committee report adds to the conversation by examining the history and structure of linkage and inclusionary development, comparing Boston's programs to those of neighboring communities, and making recommendations for actually growing these programs where other city councilors and other city councils are actually able to directly impact zoning and increase the IDP and linkage. I think that's also a recommendation from the report that we should include. Some of the recommendations include improving data, reporting back, reporting to track beneficiaries of the inclusionary development program to actually make sure that the people who are giving affordable housing units are living in them and that they are actually meeting the income guidelines for them. Many Black and Latino families fall below the affordability thresholds from the city set by inclusionary development, and it's critical we monitor and report the program's impacts over time. We need to also clarify the applicability of the IDP to the planned development areas like Suffolk Downs. And I bring that up because that's what's happening in a major way in East Boston. Today, the policy for the planned development areas is unclear. What that means is what we pass today for IDP could change, but the planned development area may adopt a smaller or lower percentage at the 13%, and we may change it. And our concern is that PDAs do not grow with their requirements on developers. We need to promote long-term affordability by pairing with community land trusts and other permanently affordable community-owned housing, evaluating decision-making authority, which in other communities is a collaborative product of the mayor and the city council. We need to adjust Boston's zoning code to ensure we do not inadvertently miss opportunities to update linkage, which I wonderfully that we're taking advantage of that now. And on the final recommendation, we need to codify inclusionary development and modernizing linkage in the statute. I'll defer to the report from Government Ops on Tuesday's hearing to hear more about that, but I look forward to working more with this body. And we wanted to summarize all of these recommendations and also have this hard work and body as a resource for my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Docket 0580 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 0209, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 30, 2019. Docket number 0209, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 17, regarding licensing and regulating shared mobility businesses. submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0209 is an ordinance that seeks to create a flexible license structure that allows the city to regulate businesses offering vehicles and small vehicles for rent on city streets and sidewalks. The matter was sponsored by Mayor Martin J. Walsh. The committee held a public hearing on Tuesday, February 26, and a working session on Friday, March 15. At that working session, the committee reviewed suggested changes, including having a city councilor serve as a member of the advisory committee, reporting requirements of the advisory committee findings, youth appointee, dynamic cap, annual analysis of licenses, privacy, and public reporting requirements regarding utilization. The committee also discussed BTD staff capacity to effectively implement this program, the creation of a pilot program and data on trips, and imposing fines on users who violate terms of the ordinance. The committee also discussed the collection of scooters and the responsibility of the companies, as well as the insurance and all liabilities. More importantly, the committee highlighted concerns about safety and equity and the industry's impact on ADA accessibility in response to public comments that were received at the hearing. The administration explained that the scope of the ordinance is intentionally broad due to the constantly evolving industry, and that Small Vehicle Sharing Business Advisory Committee will help create the regulatory authority of the Small Vehicle Sharing Business that are not currently codified in the ordinance. Based on the information gathered at the hearing and the working session, the docket will be amended. The summary of the amendments are as follows. Section 17-21.4 is amended by having a city councilor serve on the advisory committee by including the following provision. Quote, "The city council president or such other council designated from time to time by the council president," after the following words, quote, "a representative from the Disabilities Commission." Also, section 17-21.4 is further amended by adding a new subsection D that will establish reporting requirements for the advisory committee as follows. The advisory committee shall issue a quarterly report to the mayor and city council on actions and recommendations undertaken by the advisory committee. Such reports shall be filed by the office of the city clerk, placed on the agenda at the next city council meeting after such filing. Furthermore, it should be noted that many of the amendments suggested by the committee will be addressed through the licensing and contracting process with individual operators. So as a result of these amendments, the chair, as chair recommended it, docket 0209 ought to pass in an amended draft and through the chair, work with colleague who did tremendous work on this issue, which is Counselor O'Malley. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise first to commend my dear colleague and friend, the Chairman of the Government Operations Committee, the at-large counsel from South Boston, for his incredible work, as well as Sam from his team, and Will Poff Webster from my team. This is really exciting, and this is an incredibly important first step. I really want to commend the administration for going through this process in such a thoughtful and deliberative way. We've seen other cities have tremendously successful rollouts of micro mobility, particularly electric scooters. We've seen others that haven't had a, have had some fits and starts from the beginning. So we're going to do it right. We're going to do it the Boston way. Once again, these, I'm a big supporter of micro mobility for three key reasons. They help move people around and remove cars from the road. They help us lower greenhouse gas emissions, and if done right, as my dear colleague, the district counsel from Dorchester, has noted, it can actually generate revenue for the city. This is something that is revenue-neutral at best and can actually generate some real revenue for the city of Boston. So I can't wait to get to work, and I can't wait to see all of us on scooters in the not-too-distant future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who's the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0209 in an amended draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0209 has been passed in an amended draft. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0106, message and order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled "A Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act to Further Leverage Commercial Development to Build Housing, Create Jobs, and Preserve Inclusionary Development."
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0106 is a home rule petition seeking to provide the city with the ability to make adjustments to the linkage formula. As we know, it's been pretty inconsistent. When I first joined the council back in 2000, linkage was created extra by our colleague's father, a former mayor, Ray Flynn, in 1983. And even when I started here in the year 2000, it had been gone 17 years without even being given a cost-of-living adjustment. So that infrequent and inconsistent adjustments have led to losses in tens of millions, maybe possibly even hundreds of millions of dollars, of very necessary funding for affordable housing and job training and job creation. That said, this will seek to sort of codify all of that, particularly the inclusionary development policy, put it into the zoning code, allow for Boston to maintain its ability to secure IDP obligations from residential projects, and have some more transparency and more consistency with it. The matter was sponsored by our mayor, Martin J. Walsh. Committee held the hearing yesterday on March 26. We heard testimony from four panels, as well as several pages of public testimony from members of the public. And these comments from all of those that were involved suggested that it was an important tool to support Neighborhood Housing Trust and Neighborhood Jobs Trust, and it also underscored how important it was to continue to fund these programs in order to support the city's goals around affordable housing and quality job creation for Boston residents. So based upon all the information gathered yesterday, I'm recommending that docket 0106 remain in committee through further action and through the chair. Someone who's led the effort on this issue, our colleague, City Councilor Lydia Redwoods, may have some additional comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you to my colleague. My additional comments are really that this is a wonderful conversation. I myself had filed also a home rule petition on linkage, and I think that there's a wonderful way in which to marry both the mayor's proposal and my own. I think that there is, the only concerns that I had expressed during that hearing is that while this proposed home rule petition from the mayor provides additional powers for the mayor and for the zoning commission, I felt that there was a role that the city council needs and should be a part of. I think that any time that we're going to expand the opportunity to have community control or Boston control its own zoning future, the city council needs to be absolutely involved. And what this process does not do is provide a space for the city council. So in any version that I believe this body should pass, we should make sure that the city council and a robust community process for looking at raising the IDP, for looking at raising linkage, should be part of that conversation. Specifically also is making sure that the IDP, if we're going to talk about changing our zoning, that IDP becomes part of our zoning ordinance so that it can be amended and that we can push for and look at direct votes and influence on our IDP process. That's the 13% that kicks in at 10 units. No one could doubt that these programs have been the most successful tools to get monies for affordable housing in the city of Boston. No one doubts that. I do not doubt that. But again, if we're going to have the conversation, let's have a full, robust one. Let's talk about actual minimums that we should be putting in. Right now, this proposed home rule petition doesn't actually ask for a specific minimum or square footage for linkage. Instead, it's just simply asked for the power for the mayor and the zoning commission to allow for that minimum to be adjusted as they see fit. And I agree with that power. I do want to make sure that we're starting at a minimum, however, saying at least codifying the current linkage, which is $10 a square foot, and saying, going forward, we shall have the power to raise this. And I want to use the word "raise" because I don't ever want a city council or the mayor to ever reduce the amount that we're getting per square foot. So those are edits that I specifically think are necessary in order for, I think, as a body, for us to make sure that we have a voice, that we have increased power, along with the mayor and with the zoning commission.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, would like docket 0106 to remain in committee. So docket 0106 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0196, order for hearing to analyze the safety and security measures to protect school environments from threatening situations.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, I had held a hearing regarding safety and security measures taken to protect school environments from threatening situations. The hearing began with a presentation from BPS Emergency Management, including representatives from the administration. We were joined by Kim Pelletrou, who is the Executive Director of BPS Safety Services, Rick Deraney, who's the Director of Safety and Emergency Preparedness for Boston Public Schools, Chief Eric Weston, who is Boston School Police Chief, John Hanlon, Chief Operating Officer for BPS, Andrea Amador, who's the Senior Director of Behavioral Health Services for BPS, and Boston Police Sergeant Detective Thomas Sexton, who is the Police Liaison Safety Coordinator between BPS and the City of Boston, Boston Police Department. All of these individuals play a leadership role in the Department of Safety Services, and their mission, as they shared with us yesterday, is to provide and maintain a safe learning environment for all students, staff, and guests. They are, you know, strongly driven by this intervention, by intervention and prevention methods to ensure that our schools and our students are both kept safe inside and outside. I'm thankful for these individuals, their attendance, their participation, and their very thorough presentation to the council, which included some conversation about the investment that was made during our last FY19 budget process to create a more safe school environment. We talked a lot last school year about the need to improve door locks, make sure that our classrooms have door locks, that they're replaced if they're not right, that we have cameras in the appropriate places, that lighting, front entry to our schools are safe, and all exterior doors remain locked, and that teachers and other adults have key fobs and keyless entry to eliminate propping open of doors. School safety audits are ongoing always. Those audits are being conducted, as well as active shooter trainings with teachers and staff in our buildings. In a presentation matter, I think we see a lot on social media about some of the very horrifying and traumatizing active shooter drills that happen across the United States and elsewhere. The drills and the presentation that they're doing in our schools is a lot less intense, but it is important to me as a parent that we're conducting these presentations and connecting with our adults so that they have the tools they need to keep our kids safe every single day. Sandy Hook Promise is a partner with BPS in preparing to launch a Say Something Anonymous reporting system, a pilot in eight schools next year, in which kids and families and school-based adults can be coordinated through this app and sharing information, both life-threatening and non-life-threatening incidents. And there'll be a 24/7 system that will track this information so that any incident, especially a life-threatening incident, can be responded to immediately. In addition, we heard about the need for more best clinicians in our schools to be able to access best clinicians. In particular, the Boston Police School Police Unit would like a best clinician that's designated to them so that they can respond in partnership to a crisis that's happening at any of our schools. Unfortunately, now, if there is a crisis at any point in time, half of our schools do not have a behavioral health specialist or a mental health specialist on staff. So if there is a crisis at a school that accelerates pretty quickly, oftentimes, the response is only a police response because a kid goes from zero to 60 pretty quickly when they're having an emotional crisis. So to be able to attach a best clinician with that school police unit during the day, I think, would be very helpful to make sure that our responses are better and healthier for our kids. We do need to make sure that we're improving and continuing to improve on communication regarding safety protocols in our schools. It's still disappointing to know that families, school families, aren't fully aware of things that are happening or should be happening in our schools regarding this. We know that communication is key, especially in reassuring families about student safety, reassuring students about their own safety, and getting the word out. We talked a little bit yesterday about, you know, more and more kids have access to cellphones and social media, so in the middle of the day, if something happens, they're sharing information in real time. So making sure that school families are also able to access accurate information as quickly as possible is really helpful and would be very helpful. We also heard, when we talk about school safety, we often talk about, and I often talk about, active shooter and sort of violence prevention and violence response in our schools. But we know that we have an increase in the exposure our kids are having to use needles, especially in our playgrounds. We've had a few incidents this school year in our school playgrounds in the district, in particular, one at Orchard Gardens School. So that, too, is a question around student safety and protecting our kids. Because as unlikely, but ever more likely, an active shooter case might be in one of our schools, kids are getting pricked by needles. And there was a case over yesterday just outside the city of two students being pricked. And, you know, we have to respond to that. We have to make sure that our kids are safe. So we've got some measures that we need to put into place to protect our kids. And we heard very loudly from members of the Orchard Gardens United group, who testified about their need to have more safety checks done, especially on their grounds surrounding their school. They've had a significant number of needles found in and around their school grounds and on their school playgrounds. Kids are not using the outdoor space. Kids need to go outside. They need to have recess. They need to use the parks, the school playground, as well as the fields that's next to the school, but they can't because there's too many needles. So how do we work in partnership with them, both the school department, the custodial staff, the teaching staff, then also the city staff, in supporting those families in that school community? So I look forward to continuing this conversation, following up with the advocates and with the school department on measures that they agreed to yesterday. I thank Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Campbell for your attendance and your participation yesterday, and look forward, Counselor Janey was also there, and look forward to, Counselor Edwards came in, too, sorry. And I know you all have an interest in this, and I appreciate your attention and the indulgence in my remarks today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Docket 0196 will remain in the Committee on Education. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0581, Counselor Garrison offered the following order for hearing regarding the financial abuse of senior citizens in the city of Boston.
Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first would like to move to amend my amendment, and at Counselor Asabi George as a co-sponsor.
Any objections? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Asabi George as an original co-sponsor, and then we'll update the language so that both of you are listed on the hearing order. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Garrison.
Thank you, Madam President. I file this order for a hearing regarding an issue that I'm aware of from residents and from being Vice President of the Upton School and Health Center, namely, the abuse of seniors and the widespread robbing of their resources. It has been widely reported and established, senior citizens are often abused or taken advantage of by strangers, caregivers, friends, and family members. According to the National Council on Aging, financial abuse of seniors in the United States result in an estimated loss of $36.5 billion. I believe we can reduce the occurrence of senior financial abuse by looking at the possibility of closing structure loopholes in our financial system and increasing criminal punishment for financial crimes and all other unjust abuse of senior citizens. As a civilized society, we have a moral obligation to protect the most vulnerable in our society, and senior citizens in the city of Boston deserve to be free from that kind of harm that senior's financial abuse often causes. I therefore ask that we hold a hearing to discuss financial abuse of senior citizens in the city of Boston, and the Boston City Council explore the possibility of establishing an investigatory bureau within the Elder Affairs Commission, and partner with the Boston Police Department to investigate complaints, elderly abuse, and make recommendation for procedure action. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and I thank the lead sponsor, Counselor Garrison, for adding me as a co-sponsor. I look forward to learning from Counselor Garrison her experiences and taking what we did in our last calendar year around elderly fraud and add what we learned during that time to complement this work that's ahead of us with Counselor Garrison. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I, too, want to commend the makers for this important hearing order. It's very similar to the one that Counselor Asabi George introduced last year. We had a hearing on elder scammers. I think very timely to follow up that hearing, to see what has happened since then and what more progress we could make on this issue. And so please add my name, and happy to have an expedited hearing, if it ends up in my committee.
You're good, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Janey, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem, as well as the chair. Docket 0581 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs.
Docket number 0582, Counselor Garrison offered the following order for hearing regarding unreasonable and excessive noise levels in the city of Boston.
Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I file this order for a hearing regarding unreasonable excessive noise level in the city of Boston. As it regards, all kinds of noise include loud construction work and blaring music and sounds from parties, festival and city permitted and non-permitted events and gathering. I'm sure my colleagues on the council have heard, as I have been attending many meetings throughout the city, complaints about unreasonable excessive noise. I would have filed this as an order to perhaps amend the Boston Municipal Code standards for noise in the city, but I thought that it might be better and more appropriate to file an order for a hearing to collaborate and partner with my fellow counselors and the public, to find the best way forward and important issue. Studies have shown an unreasonable and excessive noise is a substantial danger in the city of Boston. Studies have shown an unreasonable and excessive noise is a substantial danger in the health, welfare, safety, and quality of life of the public. And this kind of noise, over an extended period of time, can lead to hearing laws, disrupt personal communication, cause sleep disturbance, and create anxiety among resident. As elected officials of the Boston City Council, we have an obligation to protect the public health, safety, and peace and quiet of our residents. And so I ask that we hold a hearing to discuss, amend the Boston Municipal Code standards for noise so as to reduce unreasonable excessive noise levels, and to partner with the Air Pollution Control Commission to work for safety and more reasonable levels in the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Garrison. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to commend the maker for your leadership in this, I think is a very important conversation. It impacts two of my neighborhoods greatly, actually. The North End specifically has, oftentimes, is the overflow of every single concert, every single venue at TD Garden. We're finding folks come over there, and on average, we, in the North End, experience 2 million tourists a year, just in that small square, third of a square mile. So what we're finding is far too many people see us as a tourist attraction and not the neighborhood that we are. And that means at night, when they're drunk, when they're coming back from other bars and they're walking through our neighborhood, that's, the noise level is obnoxious and loud. And so I wanted to commend the maker because I think that not only does it directly impact the city as a whole, but acutely those areas that are near the larger venues and those concert halls. The other component, the other part of my neighborhood that is also directly impacted, which I think is East Boston, and I'm sure some of South Boston, other parts that have airplanes flying over them at night. I think that this is, this conversation not only should involve Boston, but it needs to, again, bring in mass port to talk about flight schedules and how that impacts people's quality of life, especially with the flights coming over them, and how loud they can be and how low they were, especially, as you may recall, two summers ago when they were changing the flight pattern and they had to fly specifically over the neighborhood, and the quality of life that summer was horrible in terms of the noise level. So thank you again for your leadership, Council Garrison. And add my name, please.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council Edwards, Council Siomo, Council Asabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council McCarthy, as well as the Chair, and just to, Council Janey as well. And just to the maker of the order, in addressing some of these noise complaints in District Four, it came to our attention that police officers who respond to noise complaints, and when they're looking to measure whether or not the noise is actually at a level where they can actually write a ticket or enforce, they don't actually carry their devices with them. They usually have to, I think, wait for ISD or someone else to show up with it, with the tools. And so there's been conversations within my office about how do we equip police officers with the actual devices, since they're the ones responding to the complaint, so that they can do it at the same time rather than waiting for another department to show up. So I would encourage you to add that to the conversation for the hearing. Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, if we could place Docket 0582 in the Committee on Environment Sustainability and Parks.
Docket number 0583, Councilors O'Malley and Campbell offered the following order for hearing regarding vacant properties in the city of Boston.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I rise to reintroduce a hearing order that will explore solutions to the problem of vacancy in the city of Boston. I am once again proud to partner with my dear colleague and friend, the Council President, and thank she's taken a particular approach of focusing on empty lots in residential areas. This is really focused more on commercial. I also wanted to thank the committee chair, my dear colleague and friend, the district house from South Boston, for hosting our first hearing on this last fall. Vacant properties have many causes, such as a rent that is too high to keep a tenant, not offering a property for rent at all while waiting for its value to rise, large landlords with a very diverse portfolio, landlord, real estate portfolio, using losses from vacant space to reduce their taxes, or even the city's own permitting process. What is clear is that no matter what the cause is or where the vacant property is located, vacancy creates holes in the fabric of our neighborhoods. Its ongoing conversation is inspired by a problem many of my constituents have noticed in our neighborhoods. Despite the fact that Boston's real estate market is probably the strongest it has ever been, some buildings in our Main Streets remain vacant for year after year after year. All of us, each and every one of us, could point to one vacant business that has been that way for six, seven, eight, nine, 10-plus years, and it seems counterintuitive with the fact, again, that the market is so strong. Now, there can be myriad reasons why it is that way, but what many cities are doing now, and I'm hoping that Boston will continue this work, is figuring out strategies, how we can, A, collect as much information as possible on these, have some sort of a data collection system in place for vacancies; B, consider having some good carrots to benefits that the city can offer these landlords, offer these businesses to activate that space; and C, if need be, look at the stick approach. Talking, of course, of the notion of a commercial vacancy fee. This isn't something that I'm hopeful, if we're able to get to that point, that we collect $0 from this fee, but we're able to use it as a tool to encourage these landlords to activate that space. But the town of Arlington, a neighbor of ours, a much smaller municipality than Boston, but roughly the size of West Roxbury or Hyde Park or Roselandale, instituted a nominal $400 vacancy fee last year, and they've seen their vacancies in businesses decrease by 40%. It's a pretty remarkable statistic after just one year. The other thing is that we have to talk about is, there's really been a spiral effect. When you have a large, stale anchor tenant that remains vacant, neighboring businesses will be adversely affected. In fact, a neighboring business can see their business decline by up to 25% when in close proximity to another vacant storefront. That's often right on the line of viability for a business. So vacancies in our commercial districts can begat more vacancies in our commercial districts. As I said, we had a working session, a hearing last year. I'm hopeful that the next step will be a working session, perhaps another hearing, working concert with the Council President and the Chairman. We want to include data collection, streamline pop-up permitting, and financial carrots and sticks. And my dear colleague and friend, the District Five Council, there was an issue with a very large restaurant build-out that, for whatever reason, as many of us know, it can be a tricky business, the restaurant was unable to go into this place. It would have been not only an eyesore, but it would have been a major anchor tenant that remained vacant. He worked with the Main Streets, with some neighbors, and they're now on their second beer garden there. And it's terrific, and it's successful, and you're seeing area businesses and restaurants really reap the benefit of that. As I said before, I think this vacancy initiative will succeed if we're able to work together, have a range of approaches to address our business districts, and also recognize the fact that no two business districts are the same. Obviously, we want to be sensitive to that as we come up with rules and regulations going forward. With property in such high demand, letting these areas sit unused is a disservice to their neighbors and to businesses and the people across the city, particularly those who are slowly being priced out of Boston. We want our storefronts and our buildings to be filled with people who can contribute to the vibrancy of our city. In a growing Boston, 2019, we should not have empty storefronts when we have entrepreneurs ready to fill them. Boston should not have people without homes when we have homes without people. Looking forward to beginning a conversation with all of you, or continuing a conversation, I should say, with all of you on this important topic. And thank you, Mr. Vice President, for letting me speak on this.
Thank you. Council President Campbell.
There we go. Thank you, Council O'Malley, for continuing to partner on this issue. And I also want to thank Council Janey as well. We did a separate hearing order to exclusively focus on the vacant residential properties as well. I mean, they go hand in hand. But I do like taking sort of parallel tracks to look at different solutions and ideas so that these properties, whether residential or commercial, don't remain vacant. You summed it up well. I mean, for you to be in a neighborhood or to live in a neighborhood and have to go buy a vacant, blighted property every single day is just unacceptable, and we can't continue to not do something about it. And in our hearing last year, I was really shocked to look at the data, specifically just for the city-owned parcels, and to learn that not only were there so many of them that were inactive, where something could be built or the space could be activated for some purpose for the community, overwhelmingly, the majority of those parcels were in Dorchester and Mattapan, District Four and Five, or in Roxbury, District Seven. And that's just unacceptable. And so out of that conversation, just recently had an event we called Reclaiming Space with Wentworth, some folks from Amsterdam who were activating spaces in creative ways in Amsterdam. We did this incredible workshop. We had teams, community members show up to Wentworth for weekend activity where they came up with ideas to activate these spaces. And so we're thinking outside the box in my office and creatively about how do we activate these spaces, build something, get something done? And that event cost the city $0. And now we have a wealth of ideas, along with some ideas, not just sort of fluff pie in the sky, but actual concrete ideas that we could do to activate these spaces. And so I'm excited to continue the conversation, to pull in all of my colleagues who care about this, because this just isn't sort of a housing issue or quality of life issue. It's also a public safety issue. We know that when properties sit vacant, it tends to attract those who are up to no good. And sadly, even in my district, one of the properties that residents had been complaining about for a very long time, we didn't move on doing anything until after someone was stabbed. And that's just too long. And so there's opportunity for us to be proactive versus reactive, so excited for the partnership and to join all of my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Janey.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. First of all, please add my name. This is a very important hearing order. I want to commend the sponsors for refiling this. As people know, I represent Roxbury, South End, Dorchester, and Fenway. Several commercial districts in my district, Dudley in particular, which is the neighborhood in which I live, is in crisis, if we want to be frank and honest. I like to say transition because I like to be hopeful about the situation. There's been a lot of media coverage in The Globe and The Herald and on television about the vacancy rates in Dudley Square and what that means for the businesses that are trying to hold on in terms of the spiral effect that you described. We've recently, we're losing Ashley Stewart. Haley House has closed its doors, thankfully, just temporarily, and Haley House is such an important staple in this community. There are other stores that are closing. The good news in all of this, one, I will commend the administration for investment. There's like $5 million being invested into Dudley Square in terms of infrastructure, but all of that is for nothing if we're not also helping the small businesses stay afloat. Small businesses are so important in terms of creating jobs for the people in the community and creating that vibrant district, commercial district that we all want to see. I'm old enough to remember Dudley, when we had Blair's and Woolworth's and Robel's and all of these stores. This is the place that you went to shop. You went down Dudley or you went downtown. We didn't have all of these strip malls and South Shore Plaza and all these other places. And now it's really hard for small businesses, one, to start up, period. It's hard to start a business, but, two, to stay afloat. So I think this is a really important conversation. I think the other good news in this, and we have to make sure that we include the voices of small business owners and those who are trying to come up with solutions. What I know for sure, and my lessons from my experience living there and being an organizer there, but also now as a counselor, is we can't look to others to solve the problems for us. We, as city government, obviously have a role to play, but it's important that those who are on the front line are part of the solutions when it comes to doing more to support small business development and making sure that we don't have these vacancy rates. There have been two community meetings held at Black Market, sponsored by the owners of Black Market, already to come up with solutions. I had a meeting last year convening business owners. There was a recent meeting of landlords just last week convened by the Dudley Main Streets. All of these folks need to be included in this conversation, as well as other districts across the city, because it is so important in terms of making sure that we have these vibrant districts that we all care about. So thank you, and please add my name.
Thank you. Please add Council Janey's name. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I want to commend the makers and your leadership in this conversation, especially when it comes to, as you referred to, I believe, Council O'Malley, high-end blight, right? Last year? I think that that is particularly personal to us in East Boston when we're dealing with the Loftale, which is a hollowed-out hotel that looks like a haunted house that's several stories high. When you're coming down the highway, you'll see the plastic blowing from the windows. It is embarrassing. It is ugly, and it is owned by folks who do not live in Boston and have really not felt the need to actually do anything with their property. They bought it for several million dollars, so that's the high-end part. It wasn't cheap coming, but they treat it like it's nothing and like it's a piece of trash, and they have done nothing but stand in the way, in their own ways, of getting anything done. There's several cellphone towers on that, so they look to the cellphone people claiming they can't build anything, and there's all this finger-pointing and bureaucracy. But at the end of the day, all they have to do is take care of their property, make it look somewhat decent. If you can't get the licensing that you need, you should have, you should take pride in your property, whether you live here or not in Boston. But it certainly is a blight on East Boston to have to look at that every single day, every single time we come off the highway, everybody who comes into Boston. If they're going to come down Summer Tunnel, that is what is welcoming them, this huge, hollowed-out, haunted house of a hotel. It's a combination of residential and commercial, and I would love to see us apply a daily fee on this, on those owners, to make sure that if they're not going to do anything with it, that they're going to at least pay to be a problem in Boston. It should not be cheap to have ugliness. It should not be cheap to have vacancy. It should not be cheap to basically own something in Boston and do nothing. We need to make it worth their while, and apparently, the privilege to own something in East Boston, which many people can't do, the privilege to have a small business in East Boston, which most people cannot afford nowadays, they have taken advantage of that. They do not see the benefits of that. At the end of the day, not only is it a blight, but it's also a danger. Found out recently, it was also one of the best viewing places, the top of this place. I don't know how they got up there, if the elevator even works or is up to code, but many people, residents, went up there to watch the fireworks on July 4th at the top of this hollowed-out hotel. So it is attracting a lot of folks to come in there and have a great time. I don't know that it's altogether safe to do that. So we would love, I look forward to this hearing. I look forward to an ordinance or some way in which you can enforce and require them to pay to treat our community so cheaply.
Would you like to add your name?
Yes, please.
Please add Councilor Edwards' name. Chair recognizes Council McCarthy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Chair, I just, I'll be very quick. You know, I want to thank Council O'Malley and Council Campbell. I attended the hearings last year and the working sessions as well. I think it's so important as we include the Main Streets people, as well as Board of Trade people. The Main Streets, we have three Main Streets in District Five alone, 20 Main Streets altogether. Those directors, I have a phenomenal relationship with. We talk just about weekly or sometimes daily, and they work so hard. So including them in that talk is super important. And I know, particularly the District Five, we have a lot of those buildings that are owned 25, 30, 40, 50 years, same family. A lot of these people who own these buildings now haven't been there in years, and they don't care. So if it's a stick approach, it's a stick approach. But when people are sinking their life savings into opening up a new store in my district, I want them to have the best opportunity to stay alive. And if something like this conversation is something that's going to help them, then I'm all in. So I'd like my name added as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add Council McCarthy's name, Council Baker, Council Asabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council Garrison, Council Zachem, and my name as well. Please assign Docket 0584.
Did you get my name?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Did you get my name?
Council O'Malley would like to say.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, after you spoke. Okay. 0584, the Committee of City Neighborhoods. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council Siomo.
Great to have you back at the roster, Madam President. Just very, very briefly, I neglected to mention two points in my opening remarks. Thank, well, three points. Thank all of you for your great support and partnership on this. Wanted to especially thank the mayor's office. John Barrows, Chief of Economic Development, has been working on this as well. We've had several meetings. He's really in tune, so I'm really hopeful we can get something done this year. And then, secondly, it just so happened, yesterday I walked around Quincy Market, and it is alarming the number of vacancies in Quincy Market right across the street from here, which has probably the most foot traffic, I would think, of any place in Boston outside of, you know, Boylston Street during a Red Sox game. So we have a lot of work to do, but I know, working together, working with the administration, we're going to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley, and thank you for acknowledging the work of John Barrows as well, which is very important to this conversation. Docket, just for clarification purposes, Docket 0583 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 0584, Council Campbell offered the following order.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0584. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0584 has been passed. Let's see. I am moving on to late files. I've been informed by the I've been informed by the clerk that we have one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda, and just for clarification, it's a letter from our colleague, just expressing that she will not be here today. Hearing, any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, the late-file matter is so added. Madam Clerk, if you could read the late-file matter into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. Boston City Council, Michelle Wu. Dear Madam Clerk, I'm writing to let you know that I am unable to attend today's meeting of the Boston City Council due to a previously scheduled family commitment. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Michelle Wu, Boston City Council at Large.
The late file will be placed on file. Moving on to the green sheets, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter to be added to the consent agenda, which in the absence of objection will be added. Seeing and hearing no objections, the late-file matter is so added. The Chair moves at this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. I just lost my train of thought. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Just, I see former Senator Bill Owens, who is walking out, former senator. I just wanted to acknowledge that you were here. Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge that former Senator Bill Owens is in the building, also D4 resident. Thank you. Anyone have any announcements at this time? Just one quick announcement, there is a council lunch right after this meeting, so you can proceed to the Curly Room. There's a nonprofit that will be in here today, just a friendly reminder to all of you. I think that is it. All right, this time, I would like all guests, counselors, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Asabi George, Linda Sheehan O'Brien. For Council McCarthy, Jimmy Hughes. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, April 3rd, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.